It's good.
Yeah, yeah. Did you set up?
I called the June 10, 2024, Goshen Board of Education Special Meeting to order at 4:00 P. M. Mr. Schinkel, can you please call the roll?
Mr. West.
Present.
Mrs. Waring.
Here.
Mrs. Pepper rocking.
Yeah.
Mr. O'Vera.
Here.
Mrs. Gray.
Yeah. So we have a motion to approve the June Special Meeting agenda.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Shackle, can you please call the roll?
Mr. West.
Yes.
This is working.
Yes.
This is Pat Brocking.
Yes.
Mr. O'Vera.
Yes.
Mrs. Gray.
Yes. Like to call for a moment of silence. Please stand. Superintendent Brian Bailey leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome our attorney, Bill Deers, to the work session on board development and policies update.
Right. I need that if you want to throw it out. Okay, it's a pleasure to be out here to talk to you today. I don't want this necessarily to be me speaking at you. It's a good opportunity for us to have a conversation. So I do have a PowerPoint that I prepare, but if you've ever watched me give speeches before, one thing you'll know is that I'm notoriously poor at PowerPoint. It's like, I like to tell people that it tempers my creativity. But apparently you'll have to have one all the time these days. So, but just, we're gonna try to talk about some board governance issues and support responsibility issues and just try to give you an understanding of some of the legal things that I think as a board member, it's really good to be aware of. And even from the standpoint that some of you may have been on the board for a while, but it's like a good refresher in a lot of reasons. And I'm encouraging you to ask questions, interrupt me anytime you want. I don't care. I'd rather have a discussion than me just speaking at you. I'd rather have a conversation with you. I don't even like the fact that I have to stand at the podium and speak with you. I'd rather be sitting down next to you, but there's nowhere to sit. So, so just some of this, you know, why did you run for a school board? A lot of the different reasons a lot of people do run for school boards. Someone asked you to, you got involved with PTA, you're a parent, you're alumni wanting to give back. If you want to restore public confidence when there's your fiscal responsibility, just need something to do. I suggest there's probably lots of better things. This is interesting that most board members report spending 25 to 30 hours per week, or I'm sorry, it's a month as a school board member. Some do more than that. And boy, you get a really big check for all that time, don't you? So don't figure out your hourly rate, because you may not want to work anymore for this. It's not included attending the meetings or attending school functions. So it is a sort of a civic, you know, volunteer type of position. So it's not, obviously, if you're doing it for the money, you picked the wrong, wrong place to be. Where does your authority come from? So one thing I'll say to you, and I don't know if any of you have any legal background at all, but the Ohio Revised Code is the code that all of our statutes are into the state of Ohio. I think there's 50-something chapters. And back when you actually had real books in your library, we don't have them anymore, they're online. But we had this one shelf that had all the red volumes of the Ohio Revised Code. Chapter 33 is the chapter that deals with public schools, public education. Chapter 33 is without a doubt, by far, it was the thickest book on the shelf. Okay, so Chapter 3313 specifically deals with school boards. But this public education in Ohio is an extremely regulated endeavor. Okay, all you gotta do is look at any given year of the General Assembly and how many things they pass that have to do with schools. So they're very into the school issue, and Chapter 33 very much deals with school. So you have certain things that are express powers that the legislature says this is your power. The no one, for instance, you can't, no one can be hired to work for a school board unless the board votes on it to hire them. It can only be done with the recommendation of the superintendent, and the board has to vote on it. So that would be an express power. There are certain applied powers, too, that just come with the fact that you're sort of a board that I would say is similar to what a board of directors would be for a company, right? You're not dealing with the everyday, day-to-day, but you set policy, set vision, and you do the kind of things that the board directors might do on a large corporation, right? Making big decisions like, you know, and policy issues and those kind of things. Okay. You are a political subdivision of the state of Ohio. And you, like, again, you do have that authority, which is either expressly or implied by statute. You're capable of suing and being sued, just like a company. You can contract with a contract for, you're allowed to hold, possess, and dispose of real property, and you can take and hold, entrust, grant, donation, bequest, real estate, et cetera. Okay. What are your limits on authority? Well, you cannot infringe upon a constitutional protected rights that people have, right? Like freedom of speech, freedom of choice of religion. You can't, basically have to find your authority somewhere justified in law, and you can't act in ways that are unreasonable or considered to be clear abuse of discretion. Practical side to man, we're going through some of these slides quickly, obviously. I think this sort of like looks at what your job is on day-to-day issues of supporting the superintendent and treasurer. Those are the only two people that directly answer to you, right? Everyone else works for those two. Those two work for you, right? Day-to-day management does rest typically with the treasurer and superintendent and their appropriate staff. And then you would use board policy to kind of express your collective will, right? So I guess another good example might be if we were, you know, if we were the board of directors for a major company, and we decided that there's a line of business that we don't think it's a good idea for us to be in anymore. Like, just use, for example, Procter and Gamble and Pringles, right? At some point, Procter and Gamble, they invested themselves in all their food products. Well, I'm sure somewhere along the line, there was probably some discussions between recommendations of executives and the board directors and whether or not it was just smart to sell off that line of business and what to focus on. So those are the kind of things that you would deal with from a higher level. This is always kind of an interesting part that you do, as a board member, you do have kind of a unique situation, which is different than like, let's say, a representative at the State House, a senator, or a house rep, because you do have a little bit of a quasi judicial role. So you do conduct hearings on appeals of the superintendent's administrative decisions. Typically, that would be an expulsion appeal. Technically, by statute, the board actually makes those decisions, but the board also has the right to delegate someone to do that for them. Most boards of education do that, but you aren't. Technically, when that person who's your delegate makes those decisions, it is actually the board making those decisions. So that's that quasi judicial. You would have to act on recommendations that are sort of judicial in nature, which would be renewal or non-renewal or termination of someone's contract. So if we ever got into a situation where we had to fire an employee, specifically a teacher, the process that's involved in doing that, and eventually that ultimately that decision is a board of education decision that you have to go through after providing the employees in due process and looking at the recommendations that a superintendent might make. The rulemaking authority is sort of in your rules and regulations. And I always talk about, some of you are around my age, remember Schoolhouse Rock when we were little kids, when cartoons were only on on Saturday mornings and after school. So you're the rulemaking authority, which would be similar to like what Congress does, right? So let's take an example of the Clean Water Act, right, of the 1970s. Congress said, we want clean water in the United States. But so they basically passed a rule that said our water has to be clean. But they realized that they weren't equipped to deal with determining what clean water was, right? So they turned that over to the Environmental Protection Agency and said, hey, EPA, here's where you, we want this, this, this road to go, here's the destination we wanted to end. You have to basically find a way to get there, right? So that's what board policy would be. Board policy is this is where we want the board to be on a particular issue, with the understanding that your administrative guidelines would then be your administrators who would say, okay, this is the vision you set for us. This is the destination, you know, now we'll go ahead and from there, we get to where we need to be on that process. That doesn't mean that there's still not oversight in that, or maybe questions I would ask, because Congress still does that over, over agencies. But typically, the nuts and bolts of what clean water is, and how many parts per millions of whatever, whatever, whatever can be in the water, right? Congress isn't getting into those details and those weeds typically when they're doing that.
So that delegation factor, so the school board is ultimately the ones that is quote-unquote signing off on it, but we delegate to the superintendent.
Are you talking about the first, the first one?
So is there, is there any, so say it was a wrongful fire, so is there anything that we're held liable for? If that's the case, if we delegated that?
Well, when you say we're held liable for, I mean.
Just something, something wasn't right in the process that was investigated and.
Okay, so the, I'm not sure I completely understand the question. It would depend on what you're asking about. So let's say the first thing on suspensions and expulsions, right? If we expelled a student and that student's parents wanted to appeal that expulsion, they would go to a board hearing officer, and that officer that you guys have designated to be your hearing officer would hear that appeal, and then they'd make a decision. If that person was then taken to court to determine that their decision was incorrect, the board in general would still be a party to the case, right? A termination case, you would vote on that.
Just in any case, if it was, if we delegated that for them to make that decisions, but something goes awry on anything, the board is still mentioned?
Well, I'll tell you what, you know, what we used to say in the Army when I was an Army officer, you can delegate authority, but you can't delegate responsibility, right? Ultimately, the board is still responsible for anything that happens, but, but obviously within that oversight. So it's not like two different silos, it's one silo, but, you know, so I might have to get, know, like, more specific questions. The last one I think is also important is when a court of, when a common police court would ever be asked to review a decision that the board made, right, for whatever reason, whether it's termination of an employee, whether it's a suspension or expulsion of a student, by statute and by case law, a court of, which would typically be a common police court in Claremont County, they have to, they have to give deference to your decision. And what I mean by that is, you know, we, two people could look at something and have a completely difference of opinion on what that particular answer might be or conclusion. But they also could be completely reasonable on their basis for that, right? So let's make something easy, like some part might say, well, I like oysters, and this is why I like them. Someone else could say, I don't like oysters, and this is why I like them, don't like them. And they might all have national reasons for that, they've just come to different conclusions, right? So a court is supposed to look at decisions that a board of education makes. And absent fraud, arbitrariness, unreasonableness, abuse of discretion, or discrimination, they're supposed to uphold your decisions, even if the court or the judge by himself or herself might come to a different conclusion. If they look at what you've done, they think that's a reasonable conclusion, they're supposed to uphold those types of decisions. Okay. Management of schools, here are some of the things that are specifically related to boards, opening and closing of school buildings. Only an org can do that. Supervising and controlling academic and extracurricular students. So it's, you purchase, then maintain, the gyms, the fields, the stadiums, all those types of things, right? That all has to be gone, go through you. And you can obviously authorize use of the money for the operation of the student activity programs. State law does require public schools to, to, the boards to prescribe district curriculum. There are some, obviously, state regulations that some laws sometimes do apply. You do have the discretion to determine how the required courses of study will be integrated into district curriculum and authority to choose textbooks, adopt textbooks, uniform school supplies, and to enter into contracts with those type of organizations is what the board. Hey, there's, employees cannot bind the board of education to a binding contract. So if I'm, if I'm the superintendent of the treasurer and I sign a contract and I intend to sign it on behalf of the board, that's not a binding contract, because there's no employees that have the authority to legally contractually bind the board of education. Only the board does. So in order for a contract to be binding on the board, it has to be voted on in an open meeting, has to have a majority vote, and has to be signed by the board president and the board treasurer. Otherwise, the contract's not binding. So just sometimes I think this goes. Now, they have the authority to suspend teacher contracts. If you do, when I say that, it's for reduction of force. So if you're ever laying people off, that has to go through the board. The administration cannot do that. Does require the recommendation of the superintendent. You're required to adopt procedures, evaluation of these individuals who are your administrators and teachers. So all of the evaluation, which is your OTES and your administrative evaluations do have to be part of board policy if the board approves, which you guys do have done that. Again, like I said, you select the superintendent and treasurer. And, and you also have the authority to buy guidelines for attendants at professional development to allow for compensation. So it's typically, you allow that for your, you can do that for yourself. Okay. You may not delegate authority, kind of go to your question, Mr. West, unless the law does provide you the ability to do that. So again, a good example would be the appeals for student discipline. The law says specifically that you can designate someone in your place. Okay. Okay, corporate nature of the board. You have five members, obviously, you're selected for your terms, you know that. You can only act when you're in session, and only by resolution or motion. You have no authority to act on behalf of the board by yourself, right? Unless, you know, and if you wanted to give a board member a particular authority, like, like, for instance, a guy, it's kind of wearing out the example, but it's a good example, it just works. I do have some boards that instead of designating an outside person to hear their expulsion appeals, they designate one board member to do it, which is kind of weird. I wouldn't want to be that person, but some boards do that, right? And they actually pass a resolution to do that. You do, you have, you have the right to appoint committees, and we'll talk a little bit more about committees as we move forward here. But again, if you are appointing committees, the board has to authorize people on those committees if it is a board committee. Okay. You do have development of board meetings and agendas and adding items to the agenda. That sometimes is a question that I get into with boards. You're typically, you have policies on how board agenda items are set. Most boards of education's policies will say that that, that agenda is set with the board president and the superintendent and treasurer. And typically, if you want to get items on an agenda, you would request the board president to place those on. So if I was a board member and I wanted something on the agenda, the appropriate vehicle would be to go to the board president, because that's from the board side of it. And then the recommendations from the administrative side come at that meeting. Also, the ability to get items placed on an agenda at a meeting by Robert's Rules of Order. So if you're, if I wanted, if I was a board member and I wanted something on the agenda, and maybe the board president said, no, I don't want to put that on the agenda, I would still have the ability to make a motion to amend the agenda. And if that motion passed, then I would make, then that item would get on the agenda. And then you'd have to have a second vote on the actual item. So I'd have to amend the agenda with one vote and get a second and a vote for whatever I want to place on the agenda. And then there'd have to be another vote on that item for that item to actually pass, if it was going to pass. And that's sometimes. Okay, so you must meet in public section. So this is kind of where we get into a little more of the meats and potatoes of this. Ohio Revised Code 121.22 is the Open Meetings Act. The Open Meetings Act and the Open Records Act, which was a Ohio Revised Code section 149, are the, what people refer to as the Sunshine Laws. Okay. What I would recommend to you is if you don't have this, you can go to the auditor's website, Ohio State Auditor's website, and you can download for free the Ohio Sunshine Law Manual, and it comes out annually, every year. Typically, it takes them like four or five months before it comes out for that year, but they usually fall in two years before the, yeah. But, you know, we like to criticize our state government sometimes, but I will say this is one thing. It's an excellent, excellent resource and publication, if you've ever looked at it. And it's, it's really amazing, because a layperson that has no legal experience whatsoever can pick it up, and it is drafted, and it reads in a way that a normal person that has decent reading comprehension can understand it. But from an attorney's standpoint, it's still a great resource tool, because it has a very, very in-depth and robust sites, cases, and statutes. So it's an amazing document, and if you ever have questions, you know, obviously, you can call us anytime you want. But having that manual close by is probably a good idea. And I just keep it on my computer, so when people call, I use it all the time, too, to answer questions in the office. Okay. But, so it has to be a public body, it has to be open to the public, you have to have notice, and you have to have minutes. And so as we go into this, what's a school board? It's a public body. A school board, obviously, is a public body, right? No question about it. Then what about committees of the school board as well? There's, sometimes that's where we get into some of the problems, right? If you create the committee, or says we want to create a committee to study, I don't know, what do you want to study? What we're gonna, what we're gonna have for the cafeteria menu next year. What we're gonna, what we're gonna have for the cafeteria menu next year, so I'm stupid, okay? If you've created that committee, even if not one board member served on that committee, it's a public meeting and it's subject to the requirements of law. Sometimes there's this misnomer that, well, if you only have two board members or one board member or no board members, it's not a public meeting, it's still a public meeting. If you ask the superintendent to create a committee because you want to have some guidance on something. So let's say, I don't know, I know you guys are struggling, you know, you're always dealing with these issues because you're growing like crazy out here right now. It's amazing for when I started coming out here twenty-five years ago, but let's say you decide where, where are we going to go with facilities next? We don't know what our next, you know, we know we're going to have some facility issues. So superintendent says, or I'd like to start a committee on facilities so I can give you a recommendation. I would say that most courts would also say that that's a public meeting because the purpose of that committee is to give you a forward direction. Because remember one of that slide four about opening buildings and closing buildings and putting levees on and all that, that's something only you can do. So courts would typically say that that's a public meeting too. We had a case a long, long time ago in Forest Hills, like twenty-eight years ago maybe. And for those of you who are aware, Forest Hills has always struggled, but they want one high school or two high schools, right? You're like either, like you're on one side of that fence or the other in that community. It's always been a very, you know, how should I say it, hot issue, some people are passionate about. And a former superintendent twenty years ago decided that he felt that he needed to have put a committee together because he really wanted to be able to go to the board and say, it's not just my recommendation, I brought stakeholders in from all around the community to make this decision. But because in that particular community, that issue was always such a hot button issue, he really wanted that people to be on that, to be able to serve sort of anonymously. Because he wanted, and he wanted those meetings not to be public because he wanted people to be able to speak their mind and not be necessarily, you know, sort of intimidated by what people might hear him say or not say. So that he, he felt that that was his committee and he didn't ask the board, the board member to share it on it, he just did it on his own. Well, the local paper sued us and we went to court and Judge Martin said, he said, well, Bill, here's a deal. It's a close one, but the purpose of the committee is to recommend to the board. And that's where I'm going to go because the law says that basically it's like, it's like the casino, if there's a tie, the house wins, right? And if there's a tie on whether or not it might be a public meeting or not a public meeting, it's considered a public meeting under statute. So I always tell you to focus more on what the purpose of the committee is than how it was created or why board members were on it or any of those things. And that's usually a pretty good. Now, on the other hand, if, you know, Todd just asked two board members to come in because he wants to get some feedback on something with, that he's gonna do or not do. You know, not every meeting in every office that every single time's a public meeting, but it's more of like the committees. The fact that you're all together does not always constitute a public meeting. If, um, theoretically by law, I don't recommend it, you could have all come here, listened to me today and not called to the meeting. However, you wouldn't have been able to talk or ask any, or or deliberate or talk to each other, you would have to have just listened. And if you just sat there and just listened, it wouldn't be a meeting because you didn't deliberate. So don't ever worry like if there's a community concert or, you know, you're going to show up at the football game on Friday night. I mean, just you can't talk business while you're there, but you can ask people how their kids are doing and where they went on vacation last week and all that stuff. That's perfectly fine.
So for discussing for, for the benefit of the district, err on the side of caution and making an open, open meeting.
Yeah, if you're talking school business and it's going to be, and we're going to talk a little bit more as we move on on this. I would typically, typically kind of default to the fact that it's an open meeting, right? But not all the time. It's, and it's so weird, you have to kind of look at all the circumstances. What is a board meeting? A pre-arranged gathering of a majority of the members, a series of smaller meetings, back to back, when they're attended by a majority of the board, we take them to whole meeting meetings. This is where I get really worried about, I call them cyber meetings. If I'm a board member and I send the superintendent an email, hey, I got this great idea for X, Y, Z, whatever it is, I don't know, we got to repave the parking lot, whatever it is, right? And I, I copy all of you on it and I send it to the superintendent. And then, I don't know, Lisa comes and says, well, this is what I think, blah, 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 blah. And then somebody else says, this is what I think, and then this is what I think, well, I don't think you're right. And then what's basically happened is we've had this meeting and it's happened in cyberspace. So I tell you to lose the reply all button on your board computer, just tear it off. Like don't ever hit reply all. It's okay if you, if the superintendent said, I have this idea, what do you think? And you individually reply to the superintendent. But you're seeing each other's opinions, processes and thoughts would then be deliberation, which should only happen at a public meeting. That's probably, if you don't learn anything else from me being out here for a little while tonight, that would be the one thing I'd ask you to learn. Rip off the reply all button, okay? And don't use text. If you have something you need to communicate with an administrator or another board member, use your board email because texts are also, as we're going to talk about here in a minute, about public records. They are also can potentially be public records depending on what the content of them is. And a lot of people don't save their texts, like I can't, I mean, I have to clean my text box out like every couple of days because my A P D starts kicking in, I start looking at all those things. People don't save them and if people don't save them and if we ever had a request for them, it could be a problem. And then remember about this too, like what happens on here, we have this meeting by email. And then someone makes a public records request for the emails and we, we've just completed a complete documentation of us violating the Open Meetings Act because we have all these emails to prove it. It's not hard to figure out. So just be very, very careful. And it's easy to do because that's how we communicate in the world today, right? Especially in our business world and so forth, but you, you need to stay away from it when it comes to.
At what point does it become a public record as far as when it's requested, then they can go, then you, then you can't do anything? You, you, like you couldn't delete it.
Well, right, like, well, um, it technically is public record at the moment it's created, if it meets the definition of a public record, we're going to talk about for a minute. That's what the issue is, right? Not one person saves it, it's okay. It doesn't have to be saved on every particular phone, like. And that, and that's why I say like if there's a, if, if there was a situation where we need to keep an email, we keep it. Plus the other thing about our email is because we go through H C C I A, which is our computer unit, they maintain all of that for us. So if it's email, I know we can get it. If it's your text and everybody on the text string deleted it, then I don't know what happens to it, right? So if it's, you know, now if it's, hey, if you want to send Todd a, a, a text message, can you meet next week, next Tuesday at four P M? I don't worry about that because that's not a public record. That doesn't document the definition. But if it's, hey, Todd, I was thinking about X, Y, Z and you go into detail on the text, that could become a, a public record. This comes up a lot and it just recently came up at a school district not far from here this spring. So the collective bargaining meetings that we have, even if I had all five board members there, are, are, are not considered public meetings. But the documents that get passed back and forth at those meetings are, I believe are considered public records. Now, I think there are some people that, you know, that, that maybe from the unions viewpoint that might say they don't think there is, but until there's a case that specifically says that, I gotta go back to the fact that the statute says that if there's a tie, it becomes a public record, right? Executives' sessions, we'll talk about that in a minute, but that's one of the things. Our notices are sometimes particular issues for us. So, um, I don't know how you guys go through the process of making people become aware. We used to actually put them in papers with local papers now, so typically we just put them on our website. And, and we also let anybody else know that wants to know. So typically Todd's office will have a list of media outlets that it's hired to be notified when we have a meeting. And we'll send them our meeting list at the beginning of the year when we do our organizational meeting. And then we also send them a list. Now, this sometimes comes up here, um, the twenty-four hour notice and the forty-eight hour notice. So if you look at the Open Meetings Act, the Open Meetings Act says any public meeting has to have at least twenty-four hours notice. And that applies to us. But then on top of that, chapter thirty-three says for board members, for special meetings, there has to be at least a forty-eight hour notice. So the forty-eight hour notice is noticed to you all. The twenty-four hour notice is to the public. But you have the ability to waive the forty-eight hour notice. Okay, so I don't want to confuse you, but, so if I wanted to have a meeting tomorrow at five-thirty, I could meet my obligations to tell the public. But if one of you chose to say, no, I'm not waiving my forty-eight hours, then I can't have a meeting. If you all show up, then you by nature of showing up waive the requirement for forty-eight hours. Does that make sense?
Is that business hours or just standard hours?
Just regular hours, yeah. Yeah, okay. That does come up a lot because, you know, you'll say, well, no, it's forty-eight hours. Well, it's not only, no, it's only forty-eight for you, it's twenty-four for the public. If you have to have an emergency meeting, it can be less, but it purely, it truly has to be an emergency. Yeah, just call everything an emergency. Minutes are really important. Um, the, uh, obviously it's the treasurer's responsibility to keep minutes. There have been, shoot, it was probably twenty-five years ago, I think it was the Claremont County Commissioners got, or Claremont Clinton County Commissioners got, they got were found in violation because they were like six months behind their minutes in a court. So, so you do have to have the minutes, they have to be relatively timely. Probably they would need to be approved within like say two months, but never go beyond two months, you know, unless you had a situation where you just didn't have meetings, but they have to be available for public inspection, both draft and final approved. If, if you do audio or video recordings of your meetings, then your minutes do not have to be as extensive. Okay, so because the, obviously the, the video or the audio recording of that would be the most viable transcript of what occurred. If you don't have that, because you may not have that sometimes at committee meetings, right? Committee meetings, because they are a regular meeting, also require minutes, I mean, the minutes have to be a little more detailed. So if you find yourself on a board committee and like, somebody's going to have to kind of step up and say, I'll take the minutes today, right? Because those are, and we've had boards of education and other political subdivisions found liable for not keeping minutes at those committee meetings. Okay, and there's a group of attorneys, one of them actually is a good friend of mine, that just travel around the state and all they do is look for problems like this. Make a living on just suing school districts and hospital boards and county commissioners and city councils and township trustees on things like this, these little technical things that we sometimes mess up. Any questions on that?
Just to be clear, because I mean, I still try to document like we did twenty-five years ago, but you know, we are being recorded now, so I can just kind of put like the highlights, I guess you would say, I mean, just like a kind of a bold.
Yeah, yeah, I would say like, um, it can be pretty much an outline of what happened. You don't need to go in a lot of detail. You know, and, and also too, like I can't, like, let's say I wanted to come up here and let's say I was someone in the public and I want to make a couple of public comments in the board. I don't have the right to say everything I say in the minutes. You would paraphrase what Bill Dieter's saying when he talked about the fact that he doesn't like the soccer uniforms for the boys soccer team. He suggested the following, two or three points, right? So, yeah, I mean, that, that's what you would do. Okay, regular meetings must occur at least every two months. Um, you didn't know that you could actually go every other month if you wanted. You do make your dates at your organizational meeting. And you can change the date, um, but if you change the date of a regular meeting, you have to pass a resolution. It doesn't have to be a written resolution, but you got to do it in your meeting. So if you would say, hey, look, you know, the July meeting's not going to work because four of us are going to be out of town. You'd have to add something in May or March or June, say, we're going to change the date and you do it by vote, okay? Special meetings, we talked about that with the forty-eight hour notice, twenty-four hour notice. One thing I will tell you about special meetings and Todd, usually this comes down to your office. But you, um, your special meetings, your agendas have to be pretty specific about what you're going to speak about. Okay, so if you, if you schedule a special meeting, the only thing the board's allowed to take action on is an item that is in that agenda and in that notice. So that would be a situation where you could not amend the agenda on the fly on a special meeting. A regular meeting, anything goes. Special meeting, it's only the purpose of your there. There are some people out there who are real, um, real advocates for transparency in government that will also say that you should, that you can't go into executive session at a special meeting unless you listed on your agenda that you publish. I would tell you that I don't know if I agree with that, but I don't want to find the answer out because if you know you're going to go on executive session, just put it on the darn agenda, you don't have to worry about it, right? If, if you have, if push came to shove and you, something came up and you had to go into executive session, you had it on a special meeting, it wasn't on your agenda. I still think we probably could be successful if we were challenged on it, but it just seems to be unnecessary, an unnecessary fight that we don't need to have the answer on. Unless you want to like, you know, have the first case and pay me to litigate it for you, right? Executive session, here are the reasons why you can go into executive session. There's one thing that's not on this list. I apologize, it was, um, it was, it was omitted, but you also now, under a recent amendment in the law, can go into executive session to discuss, um, uh, economic development projects. But it has to be a specific project. So let's say the county commissioners came to you or the trustees came to you and said, you know, we're going to build a new Kroger and we need to do some tax increment financing and we need you guys to help with some tax abatements or something. You could go into executive session to have those discussions, to talk about whether or not you want to do the abatement or whether you want to participate in the development. The idea for that is a lot of times those deals are usually, you know, Kroger can be talking to three different property owners and that they don't know where it's going to go yet. So there's, you know, there's a desire to keep those things confidential until they're kind of released is how those things work. That's, that's on, on one of the bullet points. Your procedure, um, you must always begin before you go into executive session into a regular, at a regular session. You guys have to answer some motion for a reason why you would go. You should be a little more specific than just say personnel reasons, but you don't necessarily have to be so specific to say, to talk about a particular person and exactly what you're going to do. But you should say to, you know, to review collective bargaining agreement, to discuss collective bargaining negotiations, to look at employee evaluations, so something along those lines. It's a little bit more specific for one of these reasons. The conference with an attorney concerning disputes involving pending or imminent court action, there are sometimes some misconceptions on that. Just because you might be in litigation doesn't mean you can talk about it. You have to have your attorney present or on the phone when you have that, for that to happen. And that's partly so you get the benefit of attorney-client privilege. Because if you would talk about it without an attorney present, then your discussions, you'd have to potentially testify to if you're ever subpoenaed. But if your attorney's present during those discussions, then any of those discussions remain confidential under law. I would also say too, if we ever find ourselves in litigation, it's probably not good for you all ever to talk to each other about it without your attorney present because that discussion, if someone found out about it, would also not be subject to attorney-client privilege. Obviously, security matters for very good reasons. One thing that sometimes happens, you do not vote to come out of executive session because you're not allowed to vote in executive session. So when you're done with your executive session, the board president should just say, I'm declaring us out of executive session at a particular time. And Todd, you do have to have minutes for executive session, but it just says you went into executive session for this purpose. These people were present and you came out at this time. That's all it should say.
So I should, well, I mean, we got our, after we do our roll, we got everyone listed, but I need to list again who goes into executive session.
Because you may not have everyone always go. And what if they invite somebody? So if they invited me or a parent, you'd have to say when to executive session at, you know, at seven-thirty and the following individuals were present. And we came out and we spoke about generally whatever the reason why you went in and we came out at a particular time, okay? I would also caution you too, sometimes just little practical tips. You know, sometimes you go into executive session at the end of a meeting, sometimes it can be late when you get done, right, as you know? And like you just kind of like say, well, it's just, because you got to still go back into regular session and then adjourn the meeting. Well, a lot of times no one wants to stick around for that, everyone's gone, but you always should chat. So you always should send someone down here to say, hey, is anybody there? If someone is here, you should all come back and do it because that could be a violation.
Before we go into executive session, we also, we also state that whether we plan on taking action after the.
You know, you don't have to, but I think it's probably a courteous thing to do for the public, right? Like if you know you're not probably going to take action, say, we don't, we don't, and I would always like, always leave yourself out. We don't anticipate taking any action, right? But you don't have to say that. But I think for the public benefit, I think it's probably a pretty good practice. I would agree. Any questions on that? Because that's something that sometimes comes up. And I would just also too, to talk about executive session. I'm sure there's already slides on this, but all this stuff kind of comes together at one point. You know, um, be very, I, I, I think it's, it's really incumbent upon you as board members to, and, and your administrators are with you too, need to do this as well. If you go in for a particular reason, that should be the only thing you talk about. And sometimes like as a result of being in that discussion, the other topic kind of rises to the top. That's okay. Just come back out and add that to your list and go back in, right? If you really need to talk about it. But I think sometimes boards are a little loose with that and probably too loose. They never went around me because I was thinking all the attorneys here to watch. My guess is they get loose enough with me around that when I'm not around, it might get worse. So just be cognizant of it. And the other thing too is, is that executive session really is executive, like that what's said and discussed there needs to stay confidential. And that means you can't tell your wife, you can't tell your husband, you can't tell your siblings, you can't tell. your siblings, you can't tell your kids, you can't tell your mom, your dad, I mean, it's supposed to be confidential. And I would probably say that, and I'm going on my 30th year this year of doing this. And I, it's sort of disappointing how often it's not, to be honest with you, everywhere, you know? I mean, I've been to places where I've met with the board about collective bargaining with the teachers, right? And I know that, okay, this, you, I have the authority to go to 3% let's say. And then I get to the meeting with the teachers the very next day, and of course, you're always negotiating, so we put 275 on the table and I go walk, and then things get kind of, you know, off the rails for a little bit, I walk the hallway with the union rep and they'll say, well, I know you got three, the board gave it to you last night in executive session. Happens all the time. So, just, you know.
Legally, we're not, legally, you're not allowed to do that, right?
Well, legally, you're not, and legally, you can be prosecuted, but I don't think anybody's ever really gonna prosecute you unless some, you would do something like, you know, maybe that, I don't know, I've never seen a board member prosecuted for it. It does say you can be, but you have to prove it too. You know, and that'd be pretty hard to prove, right? But it just happens a lot, so just be really, really careful of it and I, you know, so sometimes it might even happen inadvertently, you know, but just stay conscious of it. And, you know, and, and one thing I think as board members, you know, I always call you the five-headed monsters, because I have a client that has five heads, right? I mean, it's hard enough to have a client with one head and I got, I got clients with five heads, so, so, you know, you're not always gonna agree, you're not always gonna see everything the same, but one thing that's important is to be good board members to each other. And I think that's one of the first things on that list about keeping things confidential, right? Like, because if, if I'm worried that every time I say something inside this session that comes back around two days later to me, then I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say anything anymore. And then my, my effectiveness as an individual on the board is diminished and then the effectiveness of the board as a whole is diminished. So just, I just be really careful. And I'm not saying, no one asked me to talk to this board about it, because I don't know if you do or you don't do it, I don't know, but I just say it's something I say to all the boards when I come out and talk to them, so. Again, you can't take formal actions, we talked about. Oh, this is also important, just like I talked about collective bargaining, how the documents themselves in collective bargaining, the documents that you look at in executive session are not protected. So a good example could be, let's say you had a superintendent search or a high school principal search. And the superintendent says, hey, look, you know, we got our three finalists for high school principal, I'm just gonna let you look at their resumes right now, if there's anything that reaches out to you, let me know, you know, we'll kind of take that into consideration. And if, if someone made a request for those applications, just because you saw them in executive session, they're not protected. Okay? So the doc, so that's why sometimes, to protect you all, sometimes when we go into executive session, we pass out documents for you to look at during the discussion, but if I'm there, I'll take them back. So let's say we have a lawsuit and I, I do like a settlement proposal, I kind of have an outline of the settlement proposal, I might give those to you through the discussion, but I might take them back, right? Because I don't necessarily want those to be subject and attorney's probably not the best example, because I might be able to protect those under attorney client anyway, but you know, it, 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 just beware of that, the documents themselves are not protected. So if you do take action and that results from an improper executive, improperly phoned executive session, that, that action is void. And you can cure it later by doing it the right way. Okay? The thing about both the Public Meetings Act and, and the Public Records Act, which we're gonna talk about in a second, it's not so much the fines you get, because they only fine you like $500, but it's the attorney's fees. If you found a violation of these statutes and it's determined that, that you didn't, you acted unreasonably, you can be required to pay the other side's attorney's fees. And that can get very expensive. So that's probably the biggest, biggest hurdle on it. I said all this already. Any questions so far on anything else? Okay. So you act as a board through voting, that's the only way you can act. And I think at the end of your, look at the end of your, I didn't put those on there, or you didn't, is it on here?
No, I didn't know if you were going on that.
Well, I just have it because.
I've got it printed.
Yeah, I got a list of all, like, I, I have it attached to it, there's a list of all the different things that you vote on and whether, like whether you need a simple majority or mega majority or all that, and so I did, I gave a list to Brian.
It was tiny, it never would, this is tiny, that was tiny, we weren't gonna see it.
You can say it's, you got it, right?
I will, I do.
Okay. So sometimes they get questions on that. So like, so majority members, sometimes it does require more than others. Operating limits require two-thirds vote to approve, right? That's another one, a good example of one. You can't abstain on motions or resolutions. When there is a quorum present, it's carried by a majority of cash rather than a majority that was present, unless there's a requirement for a two-thirds vote on some statutes. If you fail to vote, it's deemed acquiescence in the action taken by the majority of those who do vote. Any questions on that? That sheet that he's gonna send to you is probably the most helpful thing, because like, there's times when like, it requires a certain amount of, of votes for you to get this, things done, right? So. Like for instance, if I'm a superintendent and I recommend a new contract for somebody and you wanna vote against it, I think you have to have a three-quarter majority. Okay, you can't just have, you have to have four votes and not three. Okay, public hearing, this is, this has come up quite a bit. I do think it's important for you to know that there's nothing in the statute, either in the Open Meetings Act or in any of the educational statutes which require the public to speak. It's not a statutory right or a constitutional right to, for the public to speak to you at a public meeting. Most boards do that, which is probably a good idea. But once you do that, then you open it up as a limited public forum. So once that happens, then you can't regulate the content of the speech. Okay? But you don't have to allow speech at all. Okay? I think your board policy right now does provide for it. You can regulate what they call time, place and manner restrictions, so you could say, you gotta sign up ahead of time, you can say you got, you know, that you only get three minutes, so you could put those kind of regulations on it, right? Okay? Most boards will ask, they'll have rules and their, and their, and their public, and their policies about not discussing personnel items. Again, that is not something necessarily that I think you could enforce if somebody wanted to do it, I think what you do is you ask them not to do that, and if they still wanna talk to you about it, then you could decide to go into executive session to hear that, right? I don't know. You're restricted under the First Amendment, like I said, to only reasonable time, place and manner restrictions, you cannot regulate speech based on the content, and you cannot discriminate by showing favoritism for one speaker over another, so your rules have to be uniformly applied. I'll give you an example of a school district that got in trouble about 10 years ago, they had, they had a, a guy that came to every board meeting for like eight years. And his wife was a retired teacher. And he came to every board meeting for like, I'm not exact, for like eight years and complained about the same thing every time that he felt that the rules and the discipline in the high school were lacking and that, you know, it was a free for all and we weren't doing anything about it. So finally, the board president had enough and said, you know, Mr. Dieters, if, if you're gonna say what you've said for the last eight years, we don't need to hear it, that's redundant. I looked up board policy, if we don't have to, if you've already told us once, we don't have to let you do it. Well, someone had coached this guy. As soon as the board president said, he said, but I got something else to say, no, no, we're not listening to it, get down. And he sued the district. And he won, because he said, I got something else to say and we didn't ask him what it was, we said no. Okay? So, now, that doesn't mean you can like yell at the board from, from out in the stands or disrupt the meeting or any of those kind of things, you still have to have the quorum, you have to let the public meeting take place, but that rule about First Amendment, you don't have to let anybody speak, but when you do, you get what you get. Okay? So just be aware of that. Now, there's no requirement for you to respond to them, there's no requirement, engage in conversation with them. And if you do have rules, you need to enforce them. So if you don't like me and you let, you hold me to three minutes, but you like somebody else and you don't, that becomes problematic too. And if you're at a meeting in the middle of August and there's one person there that don't talk for 30 minutes, but then in September, there's 27 people and you hold me, that's a problem too. They gotta be uniform and they gotta be consistent, that's where we'll get in trouble. And most boards are recording it like you are with me right now, so there's, again, there's evidence. We dig our own hole sometimes in this kind of cases, right? Like I said, if it's abusive, disruptive, inflammatory. And that last one is one that I was kind of talking about, about employee speech. I would say that most courts are in favor of the free speech, and so if you could ask to say, Mr. Dieters, look, we don't tend to discuss personnel items, but if your item's really not important, we can discuss with the superintendent, maybe scheduling an executive session for you, right? Okay, any questions on the meetings? We're gonna switch to records.
There's no requirement for addresses, correct?
You can ask for them, but if they refuse to give it to you, you can't, you can't hold that as being a problem. Now, you, there, there are boards that have, that you could put a rule that says you can't speak to us unless you're a resident, but you have to enforce it. And that can become a little problematic sometimes, because if, if someone said they were and you couldn't prove they weren't, what would you do?
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So. Yeah, but I guess there could be a situation where you know for certain somebody's not, right? But I always like to look at the practical aspect of my advice, right? Because at the end of the day, you still have to, still gotta make it work, right? You know, I could get up here and say, well, Smith versus Johnson, the court said blah, 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 well, that doesn't help you. And you get kind of to that where we need to be. Yeah. So this is interesting, so public record, well, in order for something to be a public record, it first has to be a record in and of itself. Okay, so if, if we, I'm sure the administration and maybe you as board members now even, get all kinds of junk mail about you being on a board of education, or junk mail about this or that, and then we get at the office all the time, if we take that photo, it doesn't matter, it's not a record, we didn't, it doesn't document your organization's functions, policies, decisions, procedures, operations, et cetera. Okay, so when I gave you the example of Corey asked Todd, the, this guy stopped by at four o'clock tomorrow talking about something, that document, whether it's a text or an email, that doesn't document anything, so that doesn't have to be kept, right? So, this is where I say to you that if you do have to give communication that meets that second bullet, that would be a record, I would, I would ask you to refrain from doing it on text. Those are the times when I'd say, if it's that important, and it's that, it deals with these kind of things, my advice would be get on the district, your, your district email and send an email, because I know that email's preserved. Okay, I don't have to worry about it. And you don't have to worry about it, right? So if, if someone says, we get a public records request, I want all the board members' emails and texts about X, Y, Z from March 1st, 2024 to June 10th, 2024. Well, if you know you never text on any of that kind of stuff, it's really easy to say, well, Todd, all mine's in the district email, how about it? Right? Because I don't have any texts, I don't text those things. But if you sometimes text it, then you're like, oh my God, did I save all my texts? Some people do save all their texts, but, but not me, so, you know? And then, once it, once it's a, once it's a record, then the question is, is it a public record? So for example, employees' medical information, it's a record, right? But it's not public because it's exempted as a medical record. Student records, they're, they're, they're a record, but they're not public because there's exemptions for student records. Okay, so there are certain things that are exempted, social security numbers, it's a record exempted, right? But someone's attendance would not be, right? Even though it might say sickly or whatever, it just says sick, it doesn't say, it wouldn't be a HIPAA violation because it doesn't say why, what it is. Okay? There is no obligation under Ohio law to respond to requests for information, it's only documents. So a lot of times the public or the press will ask us for information, did you do this? Or are you gonna do this? Or what's your, what's your thought on this? Well, I don't, I'm not required to answer those. And whether you do or you don't, that's your decision for, for all of us, other kinds of reasons, I'm here to just talk about the legal aspect of it, but you're not obligated to provide information, because it's not in a document form, and you're not obligated to create records that don't exist. Now, sometimes someone might make a request for something, oh, I don't know, like, let's say they'll, you know, who are the teachers that have more than 25 years of experience? Well, I could say, I don't have such a document. Well, then I want all your employees' files, so I can do it myself. Might be easier for Todd to say, you know what, I'll create a record for you, because I can do a search in my database and create it, it's not required to, but you may choose to do that, because it's better than the alternative, but you're not required to. Right? That's a good, I wanna make sure that's something you understand. Treasurer is the official keeper of all things record-like, so that's one of your other responsibilities.
Great.
About public records, all of these things, okay? Personal notes become an issue. So some of you may be taking notes right now about this meeting, those are your personal notes, they're not a public record. So I could not say, hey, I know the board president was taking these notes at that meeting on June 10th and I want a copy of her notes. Now, she could make those notes public if she gave them to other people to review. So if I took notes on a subject and I said, here, here's my notes, I want you to review them, and I've kind of passed them into the sphere of influence, then at that point, they could become a public record. Okay? So if you don't want your personal notes to not be subject to public record, don't share them with people.
What, how, like where do you share them? Anywhere, like social media?
Any of that.
With a friend, pass it to anyone?
Anybody, if you give it to people, we may not be able to say it's personal anymore because you gave it to other people. Okay? But remember, that's only for public records, your personal notes could still be subject to a subpoena if you were in litigation. So I always usually tell people, don't write things on personal notes, that you would not be okay with potentially other people seeing it when you're taking notes, because if it ever got subpoenaed, we've had that happen, like we've had situations happen where we've gotten to really difficult, let's say, special education cases, right? And we go to court and there's a, there's a subpoena for all teachers' notes, and then the notes are saying bad things about mom or dad or the kid. And so it's, your notes, I mean, they're yours, but if you ever, if that ever got into litigation, you'd have to turn them over in a subpoena. Now, you're not required to keep them, so if you wanna rip your notes up when you're knowing them, you can do that. You can't rip them up once you know they're to be requestable, that's constellation, that would be a violation. Okay? So that's another good point that. There's kind of a catch-all record treat, which is better by other state or federal laws, like sometimes that would be things like, like certain, like auditor letters aren't always subject to the public records, and it's other things that have, sometimes your, your children's services documents are not, there's other doc, other things that come under that sometimes. Okay? You have to have a records retention schedule, it has to have the time, the event, so how long you're gonna, so, that's your, your RC1 form, so you have to have a records commission that meets annually, and whether you know it or not, the treasurer, superintendent and board president are on that committee, and you're supposed to meet once a year at the very least. And then if there are documents that you're going to dispose of, you have to go through a process to do that, okay? And so the reason why I worry about text messages is that last bullet, right? If, if we had text messages that nobody kept and they were somehow able to prove that we had it, because remember, once you send a text message to somebody, you don't know what they do with it, right? You could get, it's a thousand dollars per occurrence, but it's not that that I'm worried about, it's the injunctions and the attorney's fees awards that become problematic. Plus, it's just, you get sued on those kind of things, it's kind of a, a rose that public trust in you as elected officials too, doesn't it? You remember the case in Cincinnati Council, the gang of five or whatever, that, that's what it was, those text messages? That's how they, yeah, the whole thing was, so. This is the email, and remember, it doesn't matter what the medium is, I mean, I could write on the side of a cow. If I wrote on the side of a cow and it was, I use that joke because when we were, there's a class called commercial paper in law school, it's about, it's about negotiable instruments, and there was a farmer who was really pissed off at his bank on his, they were trying to foreclose his loan, so he got the money to pay for it, he wrote on the side of a cow and put the cow in, in the middle of the bank, and the bank said, that's not legal tender, and the court said, yeah, it is. So it doesn't matter what it's on, what matters is, does it document the organization's What matters is, does it document the organization's functions, policies, decisions? So it could be a text message, it could be a recording, a voicemail, it could be a document itself, it could be an email, it could be any of those things. And it also doesn't matter if it's not from a public or a private account. Okay, so again, I don't know how many times I can, I'd say the second thing that I'd ask you to know from this meeting. Number one is lose the reply all button. Number two is don't use your private email or your private phones to discuss board business, use the district email. Because I always know that that's going to be, um, preserved, right? So, and here's another reason why. If you're using your private phone or your private computer or those kind of things, and there's a request for public records, you don't have to turn over all your contents of your phone, right? But you would have to go through and pull out the ones that meet that public records request. But I also worry, and then if you ever got into litigation and it was determined that you used your private phone a lot for things or your private computer, you might have an attorney make your, a subpoena for the full contents of your computer then. And you might say, no, wait a minute, that's beyond the scope, that's not relevant. And judge might say, well, this is discovery, so everything's relevant until it's determined that it's not. But if you have a strict policy and you can go in front of that judge and say, judge, never use anything except the district laptop and I only use district email, and prove that I, show me in one that I haven't done that in the last three years, you're likely to say, the judge is likely not to say you're gonna be able to open that up and let you look at anything. Okay, so again, these are to protect you. And it makes my job easier. This last one is what we talked about. There was a situation that happened in the Hamilton County School District where a board member had kind of gone rogue on some things. And the other board was, board members were unhappy about it. So they wanted, they got to the point, I never say this word correctly, censor, censor. Yeah, I never say it correctly, but they wanted to do that, right? They wanted to do a reprimand of another board member. And so, um, the one board member took it upon himself to go ahead and kind of write the letter. And then he passed it on to all the other four, three board members, and they all kind of made their edit marks and stuff. And it's probably before you could all do it on one Google document, actually sent, like, send documents back and forth. And then the board, they brought out the reprimand letter in front of the board member at the board meeting. Board member read it, the other four voted on it, approved it. Well, that board member was like, wait a minute, we never talked about this. How did this happen? How can the four of you say this happened we never talked about? So he sued the board under Open Meetings Act. And sure enough, there was all kinds of emails that the other board members had gone back and forth on, where they're talking about the letter and it was a violation of the law. So, you know, what I think, the, the worst thing you could do as a board, in my opinion, is if you come here all the time and really big hot-button issues and you have no deliberation that the public sees. Because that is, people, whether it's true or not, the perception the public takes from that is, well, everything must be happening behind the scenes and nothing really happens in front of us, right? You know, if it's simple things like, hey, I need you to approve this contract to, to put a new roof on or, or repave the driveway, it's fine. But if we're gonna like, let's say we're gonna have a proposal that we want to increase our athletic participation fees by 150%. Well, I would hope that there'd be some discussion on that before you would just vote and say yes, right? Like, because those are big issues that the community's in concern about. So I think it's important for you as board members to try to make sure that there's big issues, even if there's consensus that you at least talk about it. I'm not saying you don't, I don't know if you do or you don't, but, you know, but, but sometimes happens, so. And I would encourage the administration, the three of you too, if you see something like that and there isn't discussion, then try to generate some, right? So. Okay, that, that second bullet's a really interesting one. It was a situation with the sheriff's office where, um, um, the sheriff's officers were all talking and bullying and making fun of another, another deputy. And they were doing it through text messages back and forth. And, and the, and they were disciplined for it. And what I thought that was a bad decision on the court, because I was like, if you're disciplining someone for the text message, don't those back it by themselves, kind of document what happened. But the court said, the actual text messages that went back and forth did not deal with organization's functions, policies, decisions, procedures. So again, this is there to let you know that there was incidental email text messages about meeting or are you available or whatever. Or if, you know, some of your Bearcat fans, like, I am, you see the game last night, what a great game, that's not a public record. It's not a record, therefore it's not public. Again, that, that's the third thing, don't communicate through text. This is coming up a lot lately. So the first one on social media is, um, are we required to keep what we put on our social media? And, um, I would say the answer to that is probably yes, if it does document our organization's functions, policies, procedures. However, you know, let's say we put the high school lunch menu for the month of May up on the Facebook page for the high school. And are we required to like have some way to capture that Facebook page? No, because we probably have a, a paper copy of that damn menu somewhere else, right? So if you have it other places, so, so there are companies out there now that are trying to sell, you've probably had them come to you before, we'll capture all your, your social media and we'll put it in the wall, you'll always have it. And I, I don't know if that's necessary, because a lot of times, anything we put on our social media, it, 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 there's another document to back up what shows up on there, right? So it, it, but it could potentially be applied if, if you would say that social media is something that's documenting our policies and procedures. Some of it is transitory, like, if, you know, hey, come to the game on Friday night, we're playing for the league finals, we want a big crowd, it's on our webpage or on our Facebook. No. Yeah, it's not gonna be something that we're gonna look at. Remember, if you are on social media as a district, like your district accounts or your board accounts, and you allow comments, it's just like coming up, letting someone come up here and talk. You gotta allow whatever says is said. And you can't regulate what you want to hear and what you don't want to hear. So I usually tell boards that if, my advice, take it or leave it. If you do decide that you want to have a social media presence, which I guess today you can't avoid, I don't have one, but you might have to have one. A firm has one, uh, but I personally don't have one. You might, I don't know if there's a way, like on Facebook or anything else, to just turn off comments. Because if you don't allow any comments, then it doesn't matter. But if you allow comments, then you have, you get what you get, that's what I say. Okay? Individual board member accounts, this is becoming a hot-button issue, and there's been some cases lately on this. So if you're Bill Eaters and you're a Goshen board member, and I have a Bill Eaters Facebook account or Instagram account, that in and of itself, just because I'm a board member, is not subject to public records and public meetings and, and not subject to the First Amendment issues on the, uh, the, uh, statements. Unless I use that account in any way to like promote my board membership and what's happening on the board in any way. And I communicate on that account, I talk to the public what's happening, what's going on with the, what's going on with the school. Then you're treading into waters where a court might say, and there are some recently that have, that would say then what you created a public forum. And even though it's your public account, you're putting yourself out there as an elected official, and you're commenting on things the elected body's doing. So then by, by that act, you would have to also leave your, 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 um, comments open for everybody to say whatever they want to say. Okay? And there have been, there have been cases on that. Now, I don't know where that line is, because every, the court looks at it every single time. You know, if you said, Bill Eaters, board president, Goshen Board School, you have it prominently displayed, and you have like the Goshen logo and all that kind of stuff. Well, it's gonna be kind of hard, hard to argue. Now, if it's Bill Eaters' account, and it just lists all the things I do, and there's one little line that says I serve on the Goshen Board, but I don't really talk about anything at all with my Goshen board member work. But that's the other end, end of the spectrum, right? Somewhere in the middle lies the safe ground and, and the, and the dangerous ground.
Did you follow the same advice of turning off comments?
Probably, yeah. Or if you really felt it necessary to do, I have two accounts. I have my personal account, and I have one is, you know, Corey West, Goshen board member account. And then therefore you know that one is, is where I'm gonna, you know, put whatever my thoughts are on whatever issues are on that one. I just think when you kind of co-mingle those two together, it becomes problematic.
Well, I have a question.
Because you may not want them to comment on things that are not related to your board, then where do you draw the line, right? Yeah.
But how do you, I guess, we have to, I guess I have my own comments, but yet we all are, we act as one board, right? So how do you draw the line there? If I say, this is Melissa, board member, and I make a comment like, I like our soccer uniforms. But the board does not know that it's soccer uniforms. That's not act.
So that's more of a, that's not an issue, which I would say is an issue related to First Amendment or, 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 uh, open records.
Okay.
That's more of a board governance, like taking care of each other kind of thing. So my advice typically is, is if you have an opinion as a, a board member, make it very clear that this is my opinion as one of five, and this is what I believe. Right? Because if you start speaking for the board as a whole, then your other board member's not gonna be happy with you.
Correct.
But you're still entitled to your opinion as a person.
You should put that on social media or you shouldn't, or?
That's not a legal question, that's more like what's smart and what's not smart. And I think that's more about like your, your relationship with each other. I think if you do do it, then I would, my recommendation would be to make it very clear, I'm speaking as a board member, not the board. Okay? Now, that doesn't mean that people aren't gonna perceive it differently. And that's where you all have to have some, you know. You know, it might be, it even could be something at some point that if you guys think that that's an issue that you need to address, that you guys have some discussions with each other and figure out, hey, what's our, what's our practice with one another gonna be on that? How are we gonna handle that, right? So, because it's no fun to sort of on a board that, that's split. Right? At some point, like I said, you know. So when I do collective bargaining negotiations, sometimes with board members there, and I always at the end of the meeting say, thank you very much for coming, because guess what, today we were all in this room, and the only one not getting paid to be here is you. Right? You know, it's just not, I mean, it's, it's a civic duty that you, and, and if you guys can't find a way to get along on that, that kind of makes serving kind of, you know, kind of leaves a bad taste in your mouth, so. But, um, but it's out there now, right? So my more worries are First Amendment issues. So if you turn comments off, you don't have to worry about it. Um. This is why people obviously do it, right? I mean, it can help a lot, it can create under-communication. We always put this in there because, um, there have been more and more kind of like phishing and ransomware issues that have happened to boards. Todd, what was that? I'm not gonna say any names of where it happened, because I can't remember, so I couldn't say it anyway, so if you know, don't say it. But there was a treasurer recently that opened something like this up, and it was something about like, we need, we need information regarding your such and such bank information or whatever. And, and it looked like it was the district's bank, and someone like robbed the district of like a ton of money.
It wasn't us, but.
Good answer, Todd.
Yeah, it's recorded, it was not us.
Yeah.
But we did, I mean, we did get, uh, some phishing.
Yeah, they come after you guys.
They said, we understand, well, you got a new routing number and account number and.
Yeah, it wasn't a treasurer, I should say, it was somebody in the treasurer's office. And they thought, oh, this looks legit, they need, you know, or, or security fraud thing happen or something, so. And, and they go after schools. So you guys are big targets for that. So it could end up on your emails too, because, you know, not that you have that information, but just be wary of it, right? So I get this question a lot, like someone in the crowd might be filming or videoing or audio recording. And are you allowed to do that? Yeah, you're allowed to do that, can't stop, why not? Now, you can, if it gets to be disruptive, ask people to be in a certain spot. So I've had situations where board meetings have become very, somebody may have seen me on the TV a little bit a lot a couple of months ago, and they say that I was not, I was on too, too often. But, um, you know, at that point, we had to ask all of camera crews to be in one spot, because like cameras all over the place and all that became problematic. The public couldn't see what was going on. So you can't ask anybody to be in a particular place, but you cannot exclude it. So that's the reason why it wasn't a regulation. Any questions on that? Almost all the boards are recording their meetings now anyway, so. Okay, relations with staff. The only two people that directly report to you are those two people on that table on, on each end of it. So, um, this is kind of where I get into some of the practical things. Remember that there's five of you and there's two of them. And they didn't ask me to say these things, I promise. They don't even know I'm gonna say these things, I don't think. If all five of you call Todd and ask him for something that's in a different direction, it's gonna be difficult for that one person to think about that. If you have five bosses, five equal bosses, and they all ask you for five different things. So I think it's important that, like, that you all find some protocols for yourself on how you do those communications. I've had some boards that, and I thought this is kind of a brilliant idea, they said, okay, superintendent, you're the liaison for the, for the, or president, you're the liaison for the superintendent. And then either the vice president or somebody else might have a financial acumen, you're the liaison for the treasurer. So if you want, if you need something from the superintendent's office, you go through this person so we can kind of manage that. Because otherwise it becomes very, now, if it's something like they can get to you in five seconds, hey, send me a copy of the collective bargaining agreement, no. But it's like, you want to run a report, Todd, I want to know like, I want to know, want to run a report of, um, how many, how many people who live in the Goshen community have kids that go to our school, and I want to know their average incomes are such and such and such. So he can get all that information for you. But it's gonna take him time, right? So that, that's sort of that chain of command that's helpful to have. Now, I can't tell you that you, you don't have the right to ask them for things, you do. It's not illegal. I'm just trying to say, take into consideration what it might be like if you were in those situations, because they, they may not, you know, all be pointing in the same direction. So, and then you got a triage and decide what you're gonna give and not give, and then, you know. So I think it's important sometimes to do that. I don't know if the two of you have any comments on that. I, I, I've seen it work well, places where you kind of like funnel things through people. So, so someone on the board knows, hey, there's three requests out there to treasurer right now. And then let's say I called and said, hey, I want, can Todd do this? You could say, hey, wait a minute, yeah, we can get that done for you, but I might not be able to get it done at the same time, like, so I got three things in the pipeline for them. And I know they're going through the end of the year, like, this is Todd's crazy time right now, right? Crazy train time, yeah.
Look, that's the year, start of the next.
Yeah, right. So this would not be a good time to ask for a lot of information. So the best. So, um, and then I think it's important though too that like, um, and this goes to you, to two of you. If I ask you for something and you comply with it, then it can't just be your little secret between me and you on your board, that information should go to everybody. Okay, so that's also important, that kind of keeps a good board membership. Then my advice is that if there's a request for information, that's fine, if we're gonna comply with it and get the information out to you all. But if you got all five, you know, one person asks for it, right? So those are the things that keep you all at least tolerating one another. So, um, any questions on that at all? But again, I, I, I also think it's too much for like the board president to handle it all, right? So you might want to like divide and conquer between the financial issues and the, and the administration. I think the more robust you make those board packets that go out in the agendas, the, the better it is. A lot of board, a lot of board superintendents and treasurers put out like a weekly update, right? And there'll be a lot of information in there. And just be aware that sometimes they have to be careful on what they put out, because that's a public record. So if it has like student names and things like in it, um, then we would have to redact it. So sometimes we don't go into super detail about some of those things just because of, of those reasons. The other thing I think that, you know, I mean, again, um, maybe it's just my own personal bias, but one thing I can't stand is passive aggressiveness. Like, I'm okay with aggressive, aggressive, but just not passive aggressive. So a lot of times when, when I see boards are starting to split, or there's different ideas or attitudes that are starting to happen, I think there's this game of gotcha that gets played a lot, where like you have a question and you don't ask the administration until you get here. And at this point, it's kind of hard to help you, because if you would have asked like three days ago, I could have maybe got the information that got it here for you today, right? So I highly encourage you that if that happens, you know, and you do see something that comes out on our board agenda, and you have questions, get to, um, to get, if you can, get them answered before you get here as an individual, not together answered, but, you know. Like, it makes your board meetings go a little bit faster. Would you guys agree with that? You know, because a lot of times it's hard to help you if I don't, if I need information that I have available, right? When I see that on my board meetings, that I know that the problem is important, I can, I can just start handling it, right? So. Ohio Ethics Laws, um, so it doesn't happen as much maybe where we are in, in our area, but I represent a lot of rural school districts, like very rural, like even, you know, where like, you know, there's, it's hard to find someone that's on the board that doesn't have some kind of business in town, right? But these are serious, like you can get in big trouble for these things. They can be, they can be, you can be prosecuted if you use your position on the board in any way, just to create anything about you. And so, you know, you be very, very careful of that, like, you know, basically, once you get on the board. you know, basically, once you get on the board, you can't do business with the board anymore. Okay, that's the way I could say it, right? So if your wife owns a t-shirt shop, or your husband cuts, has a landscaping business, they used to do work for the school district, they're not gonna do that anymore once you get on the board. Okay, so, um, that's something sometimes you have to be careful of. And there's two different, there's, there's, there's a chapter one or two, which is Ohio ethics laws. And then there's criminal statutes, that all say the same thing. She can also be prosecuted criminally for it. And then thing about you, it doesn't set a dollar amount. It's gotta be more than de minimis. But, um, these are the kind of things out in the past, that tickets to games, gifts for two, major clients, golf outings, those kind of things can be considered things about you. We've also had some recent cases, I know, of the ethics commission where, like, depending on what you do, like if you do a lot of volunteering in the school, you may not be able to vote on certain contracts. So like, if you do a lot of volunteering, maybe within the teaching realm, or maybe as a volunteer coach, there are some ethics opinions that I'm aware of, that they said that if you do that, you can do that, if it, or approves it, but then you have to exit yourself from voting on certain things that might imply to the program or, or the area that you're in. So you also have to be careful of that.
So when you say volunteer, just because I know a lot of us volunteer in many areas at the school. Is it just a like official contract?
Maybe someone like, if you go in and help the teacher like on, you know, parent day or something, no. But like, if you were like a, a, a approved volunteer coach, if you were an approved volunteer tutor, something like that, then it might be problematic.
Okay.
Yeah. So the one that I, it was a district in, um, that I'm aware of, in, um, Warren County, where a board member, um, actually coached freshman football. He was the head coach of the freshman football team. And, um, the ethics commission said he was not allowed to vote on any sports related things for the entire year, and not just the season, but the entire year. And there was some, and he was unaware of that, did vote on some few things, and the ethics commission found a violation. Now, they, they didn't do anything other than just say, you can't do it anymore, and kind of stopped them on the half, but there was a violation that was found. You cannot authorize employment on a family member. So, um, if you, if there was, if you had a family member, it was, and it's gotta be a close family member. It's not like, you know, cousin, three times removed or anything, but if it's an immediate family member, and they would be in front of you for, for, to be hired for any reason, you would need to abstain. And you should not only abstain, but completely keep yourself out of it. Um, so who's the family member? Those are the ones that are listed. And when you, when you stay out of it, you gotta stay out of any kind of discussions related to it. This comes up, any of you have employee, spouses that are employed by the board?
Two.
Okay. So, um, you can vote on, CBA is collective bargaining agreement. So you could vote on a collective bargaining agreement if your family member is just like a member of the union. So let's say you're married to a teacher, and they're just the teacher, they're not, I don't say just a teacher, they're a teacher, they're not a, they're not active in the union, they're not in office, so they don't have a hold in the office. Just, they are just a member of that union. Um, then it would be fine. But you may not vote on it if you receive health insurance. So let's say your, your spouse is a teacher, but you're on the district's health plan. Then you wouldn't be able to vote on the contract if you had too much of a direct interest. All, likely, likewise, if your spouse, um, or family member was active in the bargaining process, so they're a union officer, or they're, they're on the, sitting on the bargaining team, that would also be problematic. This comes up quite a bit. And what I tell you when that happens is that you should like, let's say that's the situation, you're in that situation, and the board says, okay, we're gonna go into executive session, because teachers are gonna come out here to talk to us about bargaining. I was a board member, I'd be like, sign our guys, I'll catch you at the next meeting. I'd just get out. I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even, I'd make it very clear to everybody that I was not even in that meeting. Right? Because you don't wanna use that influence in any way. I was also too, to like, look at the appearance of an impropriety, because there are some times where, you know, maybe technically it's not a violation. But remember, if any of you have ever been subject to an ethics complaint, it is a 100% certified hassle. They ask for all these stuff. They, they give you a very short period of time to get them documents. And then, like, three or four months will go by, you won't hear anything. All of a sudden, no one started interviewing people, to interview people, and then five or six more months will go by, you don't hear anything, and then, then eventually, so, it becomes, it consumes you, because you're worried about it, right? And it, and it goes on and on and on and on. And remember, anybody can file a complaint against you. Anyone. They could live in Alaska. And they could file a complaint against you. Okay, so it's just better to just avoid. I always say, if it looks like a duck, smells like a duck, walks like a duck, it's a duck, stay away from it, even if it may not be a technical violation. Okay? Um, so be conservative about it. The ethics commission does have opinions available to you, and they will discuss things with you. And you're free to call me too. Like, if you have a situation where you're wondering, it's an ethics issue, you can call me. I'll just give you the caveat that I'm not the final arbiter of those things, but I can tell you kind of what my opinion is. Now, you couldn't say the ethics opinion, yeah, but teachers told me it was okay, because I don't have any authority to tell you it's okay. But I could tell you what I, whether I think you're in, in a, you know, whether I think you're in quicksand or not. Financial disclosures, don't forget, you gotta do that every year, right? So, um, and, and, like I said, you can contact us. Any questions on that? Okay, board policies. So, let me just kind of just say some general things about board policies, you know. Again, we used to have books, which I don't think you have anymore. Board policy manuals were usually those binders that, I don't even think they made binders that large, like, they were like 16 inches binders, right? You know, it was funny, because we used to, that was always an issue at collective bargaining, to make sure there was an updated board policy manual in the, in the building library, because, you know, we'd have a hard time out there. Well, now, nobody, it's all online, right? So those, those issues don't come up anymore. But obviously, um, the board acts through its policies, right? And, um, I don't know how any board could manage doing this without using a policy service, right? Just because it, it would become ultimately uncumbersome, right? You would not have enough time to do it. But how you work that out becomes, I think, the issue, right? Because, um, so you guys use OSBA, right? There's two services, there's OSBA, and there's the whole. And I don't, you know, again, I don't necessarily have a plug for either one of them. All I would say is that, that I'm just a believer, just because I've always done it this way, maybe it's not where we should keep doing it. So, you know, perhaps at some point, if that, that could be a discussion to say, are we happy with OSBA? Are we not happy with OSBA? Where are we on that? What's the other options that we have available to us, right? So, and then, remember, like, they're, they're, they're scanning the law, so they know, like, for instance, there, there's a law that says, you know, for teacher evaluations, you have to have a board policy. They know that, right? There's a law that says for, if you wanna have open enrollment, you have to have a board policy. If you wanna have, like, there's, you know, you have to have a policy on bullying, you have to have a policy. There's all these things that require policy. So there's, the statute says there's certain, Title IX requires a policy, harassment requires a policy, right? All these things require policies. They know that, and then they scan the laws, and they know what's supposed to be in it, and then they give you options. Right? So, okay, there's Title IX policy is XYZ, or harassment policy is, you know, ABC. And then, most policy services will say, here are the things you have to have. And then they'll typically give you options, like, kind of like a menu. And then you can check certain things you want, and then you send it back to them, and they give it back to you. So, the way I've seen it work the best is that you are always reviewing your policies. It never ends. So if there's, just make the math easy, if there's 12 chapters, every month, one of those policies in is in review. Right? And, and you just continually work your way through. It's like, you never, you're never done with policy. Unfortunately. It just starts up over again the next year. And, again, because it's difficult, like, you could do it without a committee. But then a substantial portion of every one of these meetings would be you all discussing policy. Getting down the weeds that maybe, or not, like, a public meeting wouldn't be the best place to do those things, right? So if you had a committee of, and you had two people on that committee from the board, and you could be looking at that to say, okay, well, um, we're the policy committee. Or I even see people break it up, like, okay, you're, you two are the policy committee for policies X, you know, one through four, and then you two are the policy committee for this, right? You can do that too. That's where you can kind of vet all those things. Like, you can say, okay, well, here's where we are on this particular issue. Here's the recommendations for OSBA. We've checked with other school districts. This is how other school districts are going in. This is what's happening, because remember, you can pass all those policies, but the administration has to actually make it happen. Right? So you can say, yeah, you could pass that policy, but like, we're not ready for that. Give you a good example. I am a law director in a small town, Hamilton County. A long time ago, one of the council people wanted to pass a law that said you could not feed feral cats. And it was a misdemeanor in the first degree, and it was sort of to a thousand dollar fine. How, pray tell, are we gonna enforce that law? Are we gonna have police officers sitting behind every patio to see if someone puts out a bowl of milk? Or a dish of food, right? And so, you know, like, there's practicalities to it too. So their input on what is possible and not possible has to be part of the situation too. So if you did that, then you could, you know, if, if every month, there would be a report from the policy committee, hey, this is what we're done, we're gonna do these policies here, let's say nothing, make any changes. Oh, we gotta, oh, we gotta, the statement, you know, and those could be out in front of you. And then you could have those people on your committee give input as to where we, we landed on that. And again, it doesn't have to be the same people for every, you know, it doesn't have to be a policy, it looks at every policy. It could be different people or different persons. Break it up. You know, and decide if that's something that works or doesn't work. I've seen it work both ways. And sometimes you wanna get legal opinions on those things too. Like, you know, like, okay, but we could go this way or that way, what are the legal implications? Typically, OSBA or Niola has already kind of vetted some of those things already. But, um, but, you know, and then you're not bound by only what they give you. You can still write your own. Right? You can completely go on your own, on your own and do that. You just don't get some of their protections that they offer you as part of your contract if you write your own policies. Like, I think they defend you up to a certain amount of money, don't they? Right? I can't remember what the number is. So, here's some questions. What legal considerations we keep in mind? Well, that, you know, that depends, right? If it's policy on, you know, well, security policy, and when the doors are gonna be open, I don't know if that's so much deep my legal opinion. If there's something to do, that could be potentially very, you know, legally implications, I think something you wanna give opinions on. Yes, there's legal challenges, or court rulings on policies all the time. You know? So, you'd wanna, you have the ability to get that. They would obviously need to align with state and federal laws sometimes, but sometimes state and federal laws give you leeway. Right? For instance, open enrollment is a great one. You don't have to allow open enrollment. But if you allow it, then you, you can't make decisions based on whether they're like, you know, a grade A athlete, you can take everybody you get, or you can't say, we're not gonna take specialized kids. You have to basically open it up, there's certain regulations. But you can, you can base it on, like, space and whether you have the programs and those kind of things. I think stakeholder things for big policies, a good example like that, is sometimes discipline issues. I've seen, um, some school districts that have implemented, uh, dress codes. In fact, the dress code policy requires you to have public hearings. You have to have parents. So, so some of those, like, let's say you signed tomorrow, you don't have cell phones in your building. You have a lot of parents, someone talk about that. Right? So you might wanna have a public hearing on it, even if it's something that big, you know? I mean, you know, the one of this, you call it, is the one that are the big issues right now, and legal challenges are a lot of Title IX issues. Right? And it's, it's transgender versus non-transgender, it's bathrooms versus locker rooms, versus all those kind of things. Right? That's probably the biggest one we're seeing, we're seeing, and legal challenges right now. That's probably the hot button issue. But we had other ones in the past as well. You know? I think the common pitfalls and mistakes is, um, not going, not vetting them properly might be my typical ones. Any questions on that? It's kind of hard to get where we need to be on that.
I do. So, when you said that, um, like, we should have parent involvement in certain policies, such as cell phones or dress codes and such. What do we do if we offer that, but they don't give it? They don't show up? They don't come to it?
Yeah.
At that point,
Well, all you can do is ask for solicitation, right? So like, let's say, we, like, let's just use the cell phone thing, because that's a good example, right? You know, there's, there's pros and cons for kids having cell phones at schools. Right? I mean, there, there, you know, some of the school safety issues, it's, it's been documented, that the kids' calls from their own phones have been safe lives. Right? There's also a lot of cons to it. I'll just tell you what, I'm, I will never regret the fact that I did not grow up with a cell phone. I love the fact that email didn't exist, and internet didn't exist, and social media didn't exist, right? But, so, there's all those cons about it too, right? So, you know, what do you do, right? You know, and I remember when I first started in this, and cell phones first started showing up, you were not having it in school, period. Right? And then little by little by little, and now it's kind of proliferated to the point, like, where teachers are like, I can't get kids to concentrate in class, because they're not supposed to be on their phones, but I have other kinds of phones. Right? It's like, I'm supposed to text and drive, and people text and drive all the time, right? So, you know, where, where do you wanna be with that? And I would think that if, if I would, if I was a board in that situation, I'd probably say, first of all, administration, what do you all think? You know, get the feedback from me from where the teachers think, right?
What's feasible?
What's feasible? And even if we said no, could we enforce it? Right? And if we were gonna enforce it, what would be the ramifications of that? Are we expelling everybody all the time? Like, I don't know, right? Uh, what's it gonna be? You know, one strike, two strikes, three strikes, you're out. I don't know what the answers to all that, but I want their input, right? And assuming that, and I would tell the administration, then when you get this input, I'd like you to make sure that I know that you can tell me what the teachers are saying too. I might ask the union president, who kind of speaks for the teachers, to speak to us. What do they think on behalf of the teachers? I would probably would, you know, you have PTAs and PTOs and all those things that represent parent organizations. I'd probably want them to provide input in whether it's written or, or in, in public. And then, that would be so controversial, I think, in a public school district, that I might even say, we're gonna have a public hearing on it. So we're gonna call a special meeting. We're gonna set aside two hours, and we're gonna, people sign up, everyone gets three minutes to tell us what they think about. Right?
Right.
So that would be one I think I would do. Now, you can't do that for every darn policy, because you'll, you don't do, never get anything done, right? But there are ones that are really controversial, right? You know, if you were gonna, like, I've seen districts have to do that when, um, you know, the athletic code of conduct. That's become a hot button issue sometimes for school districts, right? Are we gonna say, one strike, you're out for the whole year, or is it only in season, or are we gonna get, like, you're gonna have certain punishments, like, parents get upset about that, like, you know, they wanna be involved in that, and, um, and, so I've seen those become. If you don't, I mean, you know, if you don't have a public hearing, you're gonna get it anyway. They're gonna sign up and tell you. So you might as well just make it for that purpose, right? So, yeah, so I, I, you know, and I think that's something the committee gives guidance to the rest of the board on. Hey, you know, um, we're gonna have to adopt this, you know, bullying policy, and we got some options here, like, what, what do we think? You know? And then you as a board discuss it, right?
Right, yeah.
So, um, but, you know, I think having those conversations and sort, that sort of builds its momentum, right? I think it's helpful, because then by the time you as five people get to vote on a policy, you know, all the things that have potentially impacts have been looked at. Right? Now, you're always gonna agree. But at least you know those things have been vetted, right?
Yeah.
You know, like, yeah, I'll go back to what I said originally. Two people can look at the same thing and have very rational reasons to come up with a different conclusion. And tell them maybe they're party right or wrong, which just means that that's where they've, they've looked at the evidence and looked at the lead. Yeah, I know, um, you haven't had a policy committee here, I understand, right? And, but I would, I would probably, I would venture to say that a, a large majority of the districts do. And again, that's kind of like your primary responsibility. Right? So, why not make sure it's done, you know, comprehensively?
Yeah, so, um, can I ask a question? The difference between, uh, like, guidelines and policies, and the reason I ask is like the cell phone, right? So legislation is passed where we have to have a policy by a certain time, right? In the meantime, I think as a board, we'd probably like to get some feedback from teachers' parents and, and some others, but, what, how, what's the difference between guidelines and policies when?
So go back again to like, you know, it's, um, I'm just a bill setting on Capitol Hill thing, right? That's, you know, it, 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 the, the, the policy is your legislation. That's the law. So that's Congress saying, we want clean water. We wanna make sure cell phones don't come disruptive to the educational process. Right? That could be your policy. Could be that simple. And then you can turn it over to the administration and say, so it's your job to make sure it doesn't, so figure out what you're gonna do. Okay? Now, typically, you'd have a little more meat on the bone with that, I think, right? Like, you know, and if you were gonna say you're not gonna have them at all, that would be something I think you'd wanna say, because you probably wouldn't want your administrator to have that decision. So you could say, look, we don't wanna become disruptive, but we're not ready to ban them completely. Figure it out for us. Or you might have, you might have more, you might have more input. Or you might have, you might have more, you might have more input on you give them guidance. Because sometimes you, you know, Congress will pass a law and they'll give guidance to an administrative agency, but they'll kind of give them guardrails, right? You can't go below this, you can't go above this, right? You know, the whole thing about clean air emissions and electric cars and all that, like, you know, Congress didn't come up with all those guidelines. They said we want X, Y, Z, and then they turned it over to EPA or whoever they turned it over to. So, so you have administrative guidelines and then you have policy. And the administrative guidelines is sort of the how to. But I, I would grant it, if you read them, they look very similar. And, and I have a theory for that, because the people who write policies get paid by the word. So jokingly, but kind of yes. So a lot of times are really wordy and they look like they just take a lot of the same things as in the policy, they regurgitate it in the guideline, they add a little bit more. If you're paying, you know, $10,000 a year for policy, they got to give you something that looks substantial. Okay, so here, I mentioned the Sun's Law Manual, which is not on this list, but here are some really good resources for, I said new board members, but give any board members. So Ohio School Boards has some very good things, BASA has some good things, and the rest of these are also really good, good resources for you to look at. And any questions on anything? We'll recover there.
I want to thank you for coming. This was very helpful. I hope it was helpful to everybody on the board and at the district office.
Like I said, some of these things are things you know, it's just helps to like refresh them, you know? Like, oh yeah, that's right, 48 hours, 24 hours, just little things like that, right?
We have some on the Great Oaks Board of Directors and we have several committees.
Yeah. Do you guys have a policy committee?
That's the next, that's the next discussion here is what I'm going to, second part of this agenda.
Was he asking about the Great Oaks?
No, no, I was talking about Oaks. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So yeah, so anyway, so we have, yeah, there's investment or financial investments committee.
You can have a committee yourself, right? And, and also think too committees work when there's dissemination of information. Because there's always that thought process that if we do committees and they're going to hoard the information. So the place where I'm a city, everybody wants to be on the police or fire committee because that's where all the cool stuff happens, right? And, and then they're like, okay, well, I don't know what's going on, police and fire. So I think it's really important that if you're on a committee, that you report out at board meetings.
We do, and we do, that's what we do. So we have the hour, hour before a regular, for a regular meeting, we have our committee meeting. And we got a committee chair, so they're not regular meeting, each committee chair presents during the meeting. And they say, well, there's actions that we all vote on those.
Yeah, so for instance, let's say I was the policy chair and I could say, look, you know, we met last month and we talked about the cell phone policy. And basically it gets come down to we're going to have to make some decisions as a board here, the three or four decisions we're going to have to make. I'm going to have superintendent send everybody a copy of what we looked at and I'll be happy to take, we'll be happy to take any suggestions, send them to Brian, right? And then, you know, so to begin with, I'll see policy committee, see a finance committee. Sometimes I'll see a legislative liaison committee, someone's going to kind of pay attention to what's happening in the legislature. And then sometimes you have a personnel committee, not a, but sometimes.
The Oaks is big.
Yeah, like the board members.
And then, and there's administrators needs committee also.
Yeah, yeah. But I don't think you want too many of them. You can get committed to that.
But I mean, but it's a lot of information, it's very efficient the way they, you know, they, it's free. Because they have a web.
I mean, if you even look at it like from the perspective of a state legislature or a federal legislature, I mean, that's all, like the real work is done in the committees, right? And then the, you know, they don't write the bill on the House floor, right? Or the Senate floor. It's written through that committee process and vetted through people, right? So.
So the minutes for those committee, should they be brought before the board and approved? I mean, like all these different?
No, no, the committee would approve it. So if I'm the, if I'm the finance committee and we met in May and we're going to meet again in July, first thing I'm going to do in that July meeting, whoever was the person that got the minutes would just gave, would have passed them out there by the day before and said on the agenda, just like you do here, approve the minutes from our, our May meeting.
But the finance board liaison would bring the, not necessarily the minutes, but the report back to the board, yeah.
Yeah, I think too, like the districts that do it well, that the minutes get disseminated to everybody. So once the finance committee minutes are approved, they get, they just get sent out to everybody, right? Or they get put on, I mean, some of them just put it on their websites.
Yeah.
That's a way, I think also for the public, maybe to know what's happening, put it on their websites.
Thank you. Any other questions?
All right, well, it's nice to come out and talk, speak with you. We don't have some crisis that was looming or, you know, some contract we got to get approved, just to come out and be proactive a little bit, right? So, yeah. And the army we call those pre-combat checks, so you figure out what are for before you got into combat.
Thank you. I'll take the question, Bill.
Yeah.
Next section, yeah.
Okay, great. Alrighty.
I can, if you need me to, whatever you want.
Your money.
I think it's part of the. So the next section on this was at the last meeting in my superintendent's report, I was going to talk to you guys about board policy committee, policy review process. We kind of got into conversations on that. You guys asked me to go get some information on, you know, kind of the who, what, when, where, why. Just as a reminder, my sentiment there was this is what's happening at the state level right now. I don't know that myself, you know, Theresa, trying to vet all these and trying to look at how these go is going to be great. So looking at a committee approach right now with a lot of things that are happening at the state level was, you know, I'm just a cell phone one, as everybody's talked about, we're going to talk about that in our regular meeting, was the suggestion of board policy. You guys have that board policy, the board development, which is, you know, proposals regarding board policies and operations originated several sources. And a careful and orderly process is used when examining it. You know, I, as Bill said there, final action on proposals, whatever their sources is by the board in accordance with policy, but the board takes action on most matters on the basis of recommendations presented by the superintendent. Superintendent bases his or her recommendations upon the results of study and upon the judgment of staff and study committees. So with looking at that, you know, in the past, when we've had OSBA policy updates, whether it be Daryl or I, in the past, it was pretty easy. Here's the submissive language we have, here's the decision we're making, and we worked through that process. You guys voted on it based on a recommendation from me. But again, some of these policies are coming out, I think have a little bit more need to study it and need to kind of go through a, a process, you know, careful process. With that said, you guys also have, you know, board committees and, you know, we have our minutes for audit, finance, public engagement, facilities committee, curriculum committees and that. But you guys have the right to establish a committee and then appoint members. So with that said, and this is what you guys were just talking about, you guys have a policy of committees, and there's the administrative guidelines that are kind of the detailed, developed directions that I use to carry that board policy out. Kind of that administrative guidelines are going to explain the how, the who, the where, the when. So what I've done is I've kind of taken that and I'm going to determine those administrative guidelines. So looking at this, I think the, as I would look at this board policy committee, if you guys vote to put one in, this is, I think, the administrative guidelines that I would follow and I want to share with you, which I think cover what you were asking for, the who, the what, the when, the where, the why. So the purpose of the policy committee, we charge with reviewing all proposed and required policy additions or updates, support of careful orderly process when used, examining policy proposals prior to board action. The members, the members of the policy review committee shall be composed of two board members, signed by board president during the organizational meeting, just like we do with our other committees, and then representation of building and district level administration and others required by the board or superintendent designate. Kind of looking at that, what I would start with, with this policy committee, Teresa's going to chair it, is my recommendation, as she's handled most of the policy with OSBA right now with PDQ and what else. Obviously Todd and I will sit on it, Director of Student Services sit on it, Director of Operations, obviously there are facilities impacts, Director of Secondary Curriculum, Teresa still does elementary curriculum, so she's playing two birds there along with the HR piece. And then probably one primary principal, one secondary, whether it be principal or assistant principal, and then Donna Tedrick, who is our administrative assistant and works closely with OSBA. And then finally, two board members who are appointed. Others as required by the board or superintendent, I, you know, we got into athletic things, I may ask for the athletic directors to be on it, I may ask for teachers to be on it at some point. But, you know, just to start with, that would be, who would be composed to the committee to start. The outcome, the scopes, the expectation, as we know, policy comes in two forms, required slash recommended versus proposed. Policy updates that are required, recommended by our policy provider, the Ohio School Boards Association, in order to maintain, remain in compliance with changes in the law. Any of those recommended changes or additions received via the PDQ, which comes out quarterly, will automatically be referred for evaluation by the policy review committee at the next subsequent meeting. Proposals regarding board policies and operations may originate, as we said in there, at several levels, but the policy introduced shall be assigned to the policy review committee and superintendent for review and recommendation at the next subsequent policy committee meeting. The policy review committee shall by a majority vote make a recommendation for each required, recommended or proposed policy prior to referring the policy back to the board for next steps. If a policy does not receive a positive recommendation, a summary of concerns will be prepared by the board chair to be shared with the board. And then all policies referred back to the board for a first reading will include a summary of the policy review committee's recommendation, a written opinion from legal counsel or policy consultants as needed, and the results of any studies undertaken by the administration. A policy proposal referred back from the policy committee with a recommendation will receive two public readings before a vote by the board in order to permit further study and provide opportunity for interested parties to react. And then as a board, you guys, a majority vote can suspend the policy review committee, can refer the policy back to the policy review committee, or reduce the number of subsequent readings. I would say if that was something emergency that we had to get in place, that needed to take place without two, you know, two hearings or two readings. And then prior to any final approval by the board, each policy will be titled, dated and coded consistent with the classification system used by the Ohio School Boards Association. Lastly, it is a committee, as Bill just shared, there will be meetings announced, it will follow the Open Meetings Act, the meetings will be announced, the agenda will be created by the chair, and minutes will be posted. So, you know, as I kind of look at that piece, stop there for a minute before I go into what I think that committee's first steps would be.
Brian, I wanted to bring something up too that I thought of when I saw your thing. You know, you, let's say there's, let's say you're not on the policy committee, but there's a policy that you know that's coming up before the board that you're, that you have a lot of interest in. There's nothing that prevents you from attending that meeting, because it's a public meeting.
It's an open meeting, correct.
Right? So you can attend that meeting if you desire to be part of that, because it's an open meeting. So you're not, you know, so if you want to, if you, because you may not, maybe it's be a policy, like, like, let's say it's, I don't know, let's say we're going to think about changing the policy for academic eligibility for athletics and you're really interested in that. Like, you know, I want to be, I want more than just the report, I'm, I want, you know, the whole enchilada on this one. So like, there's nothing to prevent you from going to the meeting. So I think I didn't say that, but when you said that, it kind of went about.
So that's not a problem that's like all five of us show up to the committee meeting?
That was not, it's an open meeting. Yeah, you're not voting on anything, you're just like, that particular step, you're like a member of the public.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's kind of what we do with facilities committee.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, people tend.
Because I think there's always that thought process when you, when you divide things in the committee, sometimes people think, like I said, or people hoarding information and information's power and all that. Like you want to kind of diffuse yourself of that, if this works well, you got to like be very transparent, you're just dividing and conquering to make it more efficient for you to get it done.
Right, and the purpose of like committee is to do the work, the main deep dive into vetting and all of that, and then allow the whole group.
Right.
Either after that or at our board meeting to review it.
That's a really good way of thinking of it. It's like the facilities, like, of course, we're all really involved in that and.
Yeah, and then like if, if, I think part of that reporting out too is to be comprehensive, like to not, you know, there could be pros and cons of what you've done, and if the reports start showing up, here are the, here are the options we had, and here's what we looked at, here's where it was good to do this, here's where, like, and that starts to become the genre of what happens, and there becomes more trust in committees as a whole, right? As opposed to you're just trying to ramrod things through because it's your committee.
Right, yes.
Did that more clearly, I mean, I know that we, and a lot of our committees follow that. I mean, we've got, you know, minutes on it from what we do at facilities to, you know, we have curriculum at times.
Yes.
Follow that and we have the, those posted, but. So what I would see and, and, you know, I, one of the next pieces is policy review. And, you know, I have the continuing responsibility of calling the board's attention, which we've done a very nice job of with OSBA through their PDQ, making policy additions. But I will say, I'm going to make a recommendation that because this policy committee is new and it's been, you know, whether it be me or Teresa the gatekeeper, Daryl or you guys as well, that really doing a complete full review of our current policy manual, it hasn't been done in a while. And I don't, we look at it each time with OSBA and get those updates to make sure, you know, but I'm going to say there are some policies, which I'm going to cover the cell phone policy tonight at our next meeting. It hasn't been touched since 2006. It talks about pagers. Well, I had a pager, raise your hand if you had a pager, I'll tell you how long ago it was, but it's still.
I just said I never had one.
Right.
Or a mini man.
But there, I mean, there are things that we don't deal with, that if the law doesn't change, maybe we haven't looked at. So it's time to take a deep dive. So we would contract with OSBA, who are consultants, to do a thorough review. The policy manager, we, it will look at our handbooks, it'll compare it to our handbooks, our contracts, our policy, it'll look at Ohio Revised Code, if there's been changes, any other high administrative code, any other federal requirements in there, and look at our policies versus any changes that they haven't caught through that scanning that Bill talked about. Any high level changes will be, you know, highlighted and shared publicly. If it's just a simple policy that needs a nine put on it, we'll put the nine on it. But, you know, this essentially, OSBA has a process, I'm not going to read through all this, this was for me, a piece of it, but we would contract with them. It takes, you know, they'll, they'll make a lot of changes, some of it will just need to be caught up with times, maybe it's the way that we run FMLA now, and it doesn't match policy or doesn't match our teacher's contract, but they'll look and comb through those. Tentative timeline for this, it is not a short process to do that full rewrite. It is probably, once I give them the go ahead, that you guys as a board want to entertain this, they would begin the combing of our policies, they would ask for our contracts, our staff handbooks, our student handbooks, and they'll vet it against all of those. They then will meet with us periodically throughout that, and I say us as the committee. And I don't know if I'll have everybody, depending on, like Bill said, if we go through and we do personnel section of policies, I'll probably have Teresa and Tom Turner there because they deal with personnel. I may not have the Director of Operations there for that piece, but it's a process. So Teresa will chair it, along with Donna, because Donna does a lot of that for us currently and working with OSBA, just making sure the PDQs and any changes that we need to make in policy is done. So questions? You know, as you kind of look at that, I, you know, a committee, I hope that the who, what, when, where and why is kind of laid out of how that committee would run.[1733.64] I did, did I, I missed one, guys? I forgot to say that. The meetings, I'm gonna look at, it'll be quarterly.
Yeah.
So, it is summer, fall, winter, spring. I will have to look at exactly, OSBA tries to stick to that, I don't wanna set a meeting date and not have PDQ, but it's gonna kinda rotate around that. So, if I get beat the PDQ September 1st, I would then look at that committee and say, "Let's set a meeting for September 15th", so that we have time to do that. I just, this first time, go around with it, I wanna make sure that when they say they've got PDQ coming out, there's a lot happening, as I shared on that first slide, they may hold off on PDQ for two weeks, because they're waiting on the next change to happen.
So, we would have OSBA review it, complete review?
Yes. Correct.
And then after they do that, now that we've established this committee, we would review it ourselves, we would not have to-
Yeah, I think, uh, you know, and, and him saying that, I mean, most of the time, the PDQ that comes with policy recommendations of legal changes, or, you know, statute changes, it kinda lays out there for you, but it gives you submissive language as far as, you can choose A or you can choose B. And I think that's a really good piece for that committee to be able to look at. If we say policy X, but it's got a couple choices, then yes, that is that. Would we take a chunk, you know, three years from now and start looking at, okay, let's look at, you know, the personnel section of policy? And do we have any in there that are outdated? I'm pretty smart, but I didn't go to school to be a lawyer or be a policymaker, so, if we were to do a, you know, a deeper dive of this, I'd probably ask for somebody to take a look at that with us, 'cause I don't, as much as I read my legislative update, that is 75 pages this week, you know, I, I'm, that's not my full-time job, so I would be asking somebody to help that committee, which kinda goes back to, who do we invite in to that month's policy meeting? Maybe it's, maybe it is, you know, Aaron or Bill to come in and look at, you know, a couple pieces of policy that we wanna make sure we're up to speed on.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah, I would, I would say, you know, clearly, I've been a proponent of policy and reviewing it, so I'd like to be on that, just to throw me out there, so. But I think where we have to start too, is we have to start, we, we can review it ourselves, you know, and we can take our recommendations too, but I don't, are you suggesting that we have OSBA take our policies and read it and comb through it, or are you suggesting that we do?
In the future, or now?
Now, I mean, I think we should, we should review it as well.
Oh, I think, uh-
Well, that's gonna come, all of this is gonna come back to you guys when we do it with OSBA, they're gonna give us-
A huge undertaking.
It's a big undertaking.
We did it once, years ago, and, I mean, I was, I can't get my hands around it, I mean, you're, it, there's a lot of time, and then it's going through, there is procedure, but a lot of it doesn't include the process, and then you're like, "Oh, do you have people to do X, Y, Z?"
And Corey, what, what I've seen is, like, they'll say, "Okay, this, like, you know, this is the person, like, you'll get a report back on, you'll get periodic reports, we, we reviewed the classified personnel part." And they'll say, "When we reviewed it, we found these policies did the out of compliance, and we, we make, we suggest these changes."
So, OSB has a department that'll review it for us, okay.
That's what this kinda is.
Certainly, I mean, I recommend that you, that you do look at your policies, but, I mean, especially if you're having a hard time falling asleep at night. But, I mean, I, I think it is probably a lot to over, to undertake without, without somebody kinda giving you the bottom line, you know what I mean? But remember, you're not, like, it's your board, it's your, you're the board, you're, you're five, you five people drive the ship, so, if you're not just bound by whatever OSBA recommends at any given time, there could be other policies that you think that you wanna look at, and you as the board could ask the committee to look at it, and the committee could, could make decisions based on that.
Right. So, basically, we would pay for a service, for them to come in, review, work with our policy committee if we so choose, and then that policy committee chair would bring it back and chair all of those changes with all of us to review the implementation of changes.
So, that, I, I just kinda hit that, because I feel like that would be that committee's first major tackle of next year, is complete review, whatever they call it, with-
But while you're doing that, other policies might come up, or take action on it.
And they're gonna have PDQs coming out at that time, and, and I, there's not a set schedule for this review, you can read through it, I mean, I, I didn't, they're gonna, soon as I, you know, as soon as we say "go" and sign the contract with them, they're gonna start it, and then they'll announce the first time, that they're gonna get us collectively together to say, "Here's the changes we suggest, here's the customizing we would suggest, here's the policies you don't need in." So, uh, maybe that binder will get a little thinner.
I would also suggest that, if, if we're not gonna enforce certain things, that we don't put it in there, or even in the handbook either, you know, because we, we, we send a message to the teachers, "You have to, you know, enforce dress code, you have to enforce this," but we don't hold them accountable, you know, hold the, the kids accountable. Yeah, we've gotta support the teachers, you know, in that. So, if we're not gonna come up with any sort of action to back our teachers and really give them the confidence to say, "You're not wearing the right stuff, go to the office." If there's no backing, there's no reason to have a policy or even in the handbook, so I think we need to look at that as well.
No, I would definitely think that that, you know, that starts at the billing level, with the home principal, if those teachers have concerns.
I think by having all those people on there, you look at that, 'cause you say a policy, you say, "Was this policy feasible, is it required, is it beneficial?"
Yeah, I would think though, too, we're feasible, I, I get what you're saying, feasible, we can't just not have one-
Right.
-if, if it's not feasible.
Yeah, well, good, good example.
We gotta figure out a way to make it happen, and we've gotta figure out a way to support them-
Right.
-make it happen, because if we're gonna be that serious about making it happen and putting a policy in place, we have to support it as well.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. A good example of that is sometimes athletic codes, right? Because, is it, you know, you have this great idea of what you wanna put in, but at the end of the day, is it actually feasible to enforce it, right?
Right, so if it's-
So, what kind of reasons?
If it won't be feasible, there's no reason to have a policy.
Exactly.
I think, like, that's what we'll have to consider too, when we decide on the cellphone, right? So, there's gonna be, I mean, on what you decide on the cellphone could be everything from-
What about Apple Watches?
I'll go to a band of stores, right?
It's basically a phone on your wrist.
And I think we have to figure out what's feasible for- So, I think we're-
Yeah, I, I think that's what, yeah.
Yeah, just the next-
Any other questions?
So, I think personally, we have to, if we are gonna do this policy committee, we, we're gonna have to quickly review our current policy for setting up policies.
Right.
I mean, that's gonna have to change right away if we're going to this, because right now, that's currently not what we have.
Well, the administrative guidelines are what I'm saying, we, we would do that committee with.
Right, that would be here.
We're still following the- We're still following-
I think that was your first one, that one.
Board policy development, that's not changing. It is, super, and you take the recommendations from me, or a study committee, which is the committee, and those are the, the recommendations that come out, that's the current-
We, we can take those, you're correct, we, we can.
Yeah, if you wanted to, if you actually, if you actually establish the committee, I might just take judgment of the, the staff and policy, board policy committee, or recommendations of board policy. All right, any other questions to me, otherwise I'll get off your, you know, I love, I got the clock off the clock for you.
It's close enough to six.
Can you round that down?
Down.
He still gets drive time, so what, he's driving like thirty, thirty miles an hour.
Well, it was a pleasure seeing you, Oliver.
Thanks, Bill, take care.
All right, so, moving on to, um, old business, seven, item B, um, do we have a motion to establish a board policy committee?
It's removed.
Second.
Discussions?
No, I just have mine.
I think we have one.
Although I will say, I do, you know, would like to be on it.
Um, Mr. Shinko, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Warkie?
Yes.
Mrs. Peprockie?
Yes.
Mr. Rare?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
So, um, as president of the board, I appoint two members, and, um, I'd like to ask Lisa Warnke as legislative liaison, to be, uh, the board chair of that, and then, um, Corey West has obviously expressed some interests, is there as well, and, um, so I'd like to appoint those two board members as members of the board policy committee.
Second. We all need a motion here.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to appoint Lisa Warnke and Corey West as board policy committee?
It's removed. Second.
Discussion? Mr. Shinko, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Peprockie?
Yes.
Mr. Rare?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. West?
This is where.
Yes.
Lastly, I was told we do not need to have public participation on a special meeting, 'cause we don't have them that often, but we did it, and I don't, if anybody signed up and wanted to speak-
I did, but I'm not gonna speak until the actual meeting.
Gotcha, okay. Right here, though.
I would like to speak, you know, no?
Yeah, just wanna put your name on there, so that we have that.
So, each person addressing the board will give his or her name and address. If several people wish to speak, each person will be allotted two minutes until the time of thirty minutes is used. During that period, no person may speak twice until all who desire to speak have had the opportunity to do so. Persons desiring more time should follow the procedure of the board to be placed on a regular agenda. The period of public participation may be exceeded by a vote of the majority of the Board of Education. As a board, we listen and take note, but will not respond at this time. All subject matters that require follow-up, someone from our administration, um, or the board will follow up with the outcome of what you shared today.
I don't know, you can turn it if you need to, it'll turn, I don't have enough to phone.
It's easier to, to, yeah. So, I am, I'm Dr. Kelly Coles, and I'm the director, executive director to the National School Board Leadership Council, but I was the president of the Sprenborough School Board and the school board, uh, also on the school board in Warren County, the Warren County Career Center, and now I travel nationally and do a lot of, uh, work in Ohio, training school board members. And I wanted to mention that there are options on forming these board committees. We had a board policy committee in Springbrough, we actually formed three different pol, or, excuse me, three different board committees, um, and we did a little differently. We had the board members as the president and vice president, or chair and vice chair of the committees, and then we invited whoever we wanted to in on the policy committee, and I was a member of that, I think that was the vice chair, so I had to run it just a few times, but I was also on the curriculum and compensation committee. Uh, we did it the same, so we made a board member the chairman and the vice chair, and then they decided who was gonna come on the committee. As representatives to your community, it's important for each of you to invite at least two people to each of these board committees for this input. Bill was our lawyer, and, and we worked fabulously together, we had blast, we had a good time. And he taught me a lot of what I now educate school board members on in Ohio and across the country. But I wanted to mention, as elected representatives, you are bound by executive session confidentiality. But remember that the other people in the room are not. Remember that the microphones are two-way microphones. So, you might assume that it was a board member that leaked information from executive session, there are a whole lot of other ears in that executive session that could be leaking information. I just advise, don't say anything, anywhere, writing or verbally, that you don't want on the front page of the newspaper. So, it doesn't matter that you're in executive session, you still don't use curse words, you still don't disparage people, you still be very careful with what you say, and just really could be broadcast.
Thank you.
If any other? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting? Summit?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Shinko, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Warkie?
Yes.
Sorry, Mrs. Peprockie?
Yes.
Mr. Rare?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned at 6:12.